Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 14, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. We opened in session at 6:30. We went immediately into executive session. We came back out of executive session, and now we're back into open session again. I'm going to ask for a new roll call, please.
All five selectmen are present, as well as town council. Absent is the town administrator.
Okay. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, Mr. Whiteside.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the people of this land, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Answer the phone. You answered mine, right?
Yeah, it was your phone.
That was pretty funny. All right, announcements. Mr. Slaven, please.
Let's see. The Historical Society has an event on January 20, 7:00 p.m., Methodist Meeting House, having to do with the Women's Suffrage Movement for National Rights. It goes back to the Seneca Falls Convention of July 19, 1848. It's free to members and $2 to non-members. That's it.
All right. Jim?
What I mean.
Peter? Nothing? Okay. Next, citizens' participation, please. Come on down. Madam Moderator. Today, citizen.
Citizen.
Citizen Smith.
Well, yes and no.
Okay, maybe a copy of something, maybe a combination of both.
Around New Year's, I believe, I sent all of you an email with wishes from the mayor of England for a happy and prosperous New Year. So I just wanted to convey that to the citizens as well, that I did receive an email from the mayor of England, Wareham, England, who wishes the whole community health, happiness, and good wishes. So with that, I'm here to ask for some direction from you because this has become a real reality of going over there. We have our tickets, we have our date, so I'm looking for some directions from your board. Obviously, we're going to have to have a little formality of, you know, going over. As of now, we will be meeting with her two days after we arrive for a tour of the town of Wareham in their museum. And then the next day, we've been invited to come to the town hall to meet with the mayor and the town clerk and to have tea. So I have to get out my white gloves and my hat, I think. And then, tentatively, the following week, the council has put together their town meeting. It's not definitive, but that's the date they're targeting. She's going to let me know within a week or so if that's definitely the date that they're going to set, and if so, we will be invited to their town meeting. So I'm looking for some direction. Obviously, we're going over to represent the community and the town, and I want to do it in the best way possible. So I'm looking for some thoughts and ideas. One of the things I had thought of doing, I found this nice little ledger of having our town clerk, who's very good at script writing, put our chart of how our town is laid out, you know, with the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, and then have everyone sign it underneath and present that to her or something to that effect. I thought this was kind of interesting. It's got old paper. But then I also thought what I might like to do is to leave this book at the library or somewhere and ask the citizens of the community to sign it, to bring over. So that was one thought I had. Again, I'm looking for direction. I want to, you know, represent everyone.
Do you want to think about taking some things to, with you?
I would like to take, obviously, I would like to present them with something.
Some kind of proclamation from us or something?
From you, formal proclamation. I was thinking that perhaps I would go to Dorothy Cox's chocolates and see if we could come up with some sort of fancy candy that I could bring to the tea, maybe.
I think we have those coins, too, which are kind of nice.
Jonathan Bubry, we gave coins when they were here. I don't have any more. I gave them the ones that I had, so if we could find anything like that.
Well, I have some, I have some I can bring in probably from the house and see who else can come up with some of them. It'd be better they have them than we have them, you know.
I know we have a lot of people who post these wonderful pictures of Wareham on Facebook, so I've reached out to a couple of people and say, would you be willing to share your pictures? What I'd like to do is maybe put a photograph album together that will show them what our community actually looks like, you know, a picture of town hall, our schools, and also going to the fire department. I know how we probably would like to go to the fire station and trade some patches.
I'm sure he will.
Yes, yep.
Compared fire trucks. You know, this sheet.
No, he's not bringing home another fire truck, no.
He want to bring home a truck.
But I'm looking for thoughts and ideas, and if anybody from the community has anything, you know, certainly, I want to do this right and represent our community in a good way. So things are going along, and, you know, I'd like...
So when is the date?
I really don't want to say publicly because I don't want anybody to know we're not going to be home. But I'd be happy to tell you after.
All right, so tell me after.
I would be happy to share that with you after. It is soon, but we have our tickets.
And we can start looking and work towards that, you know, helping you get to something.
And I have to say, we're really excited. I know what town council would like us to bring over, but I'm kind of a little nervous about returning that cannonball and not ending up in jail over there over it, but the one that they left in the war of 1814. So we thought maybe, yeah.
They shot it, give it back to them?
Bring it back, say, you left this in a house on May Street, we're returning it to you. So we've had a few, we've had a few chuckles up with things. But, yeah, we're getting really excited about this. So I just wanted to reach out to you because this should be a shared team effort, and if anybody else wants to go, you know, I'll let you know when we're going. Welcome to meet us over there. We're staying probably two weeks, so.
Two weeks, oh, that'd be nice. That's a nice stay.
Just before town meeting, so hopefully, and here's my other hat, that we get things done a little early.
Whereabouts in England is it?
It's, um...
In relationship to London, let's say.
It's about an hour southwest of London.
An hour southwest, okay.
It's on the south coast, like almost right in the middle, isn't it?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So...
Interesting. I'll have to look it up and just take it.
It's a seaside.
Yeah, there's a lot of, you know, I've already bought like three books on things to see and do, and so we're putting our thoughts together and...
On the mouth of a river, isn't it, like we are?
Yes, yep.
Yeah. And they had to name us, they obviously named this, you know, us after, something that looked like what they thought they were coming from or what they had back there, so.
There's, I mean, there's Bournemouth, there's Portsmouth, Weymouth.
Yep.
It's interesting, though, they pronounce, we pronounce it Wareham, they pronounce it Wareham.
So do rookie news anchors.
Yeah. So I just wanted to share it with you, and I'll let you, I'll give you the dates because we do need to get, I know I've talked with the town clerk, she's willing to do this in script, which I think would be a nice, nice little thing to do, and then have, you know, everyone sign it, all the department heads and everyone sign it underneath, bring it over and say, here's what our town government looks like, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else here to speak to us this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Board comments, please. Alan.
Nope.
Oh, my goodness. Jim?
I'll pass it right along.
Yeah. Mary? All right. We'll move on to appointments, reappointments, and interviews. Council on Aging Board of Directors.
All right, Council on Aging. We have Elizabeth Rollins here.
Okay, come on down. Grab one of those mics, and you got to kind of keep it close when you talk, okay?
Okay.
Because otherwise, they won't hear you at home.
Is it okay if I stand?
Huh?
May I stand?
Yeah, just pull that right up to you, though, okay?
Yep.
Because he won't, he won't hear you, and then you'll hear this voice in the back come out and say, I can't hear you.
So are you going to ask me a question, or should I just present?
No, just tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want to serve.
Sure, yes. Okay, I have lived in Plymouth, I've worked in Plymouth my whole career. I've lived in Wareham for 25 years, and I have never been involved in anything in my community. However, I have retired. A few years back, I retired from the Council on Aging in Plymouth, and I was the administrative assistant there for 10-plus years.
Oh, wow.
Since that time, I have worked in the health field, in the senior community as well, as a hospice worker, you know, giving care to seniors. And so I bring here, I think, some fresh ideas to present to the town, Council on Aging, and hopefully make some kind of a difference. I've been there as a visitor, but, you know, I'm approaching 70, I'm closer to 70 than I am 60, so the clock's ticking. And I need to get involved while I still can, and I, so I'm here to offer my services, my life experience, and help in any way that I can, and I'm...
Well, we're happy to get you involved.
Yeah, thank you.
Can tell you that.
Good background.
Yeah, good background, that's right. All right, well, can I have a motion, then?
I move that we approve Elizabeth Rollins, appoint her to the Council on Aging Board of Directors for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2021.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, the paperwork will be available in the Selectman's office tomorrow for you to pick up, and then you've got to go down and get sworn in by the town clerk.
Thank you.
All right, Carolyn Hines. Is it Hines or Haines?
Hines.
Hines, okay.
Yep. Just like Boston's, the convention center.
There we go.
Only I have nothing to do with it.
Ah-ha!
Anyway, I have nothing to offer as Beth does. I know nothing, I, but I'm getting older, as she is. I think I might be older than she is. But in any case, I do use some of the programs, and I think they're very good, and I thought there's no reason I can't volunteer here as opposed to someplace else. And that's pretty much it. I haven't done anything like this kind of work before, so, you know, you can, I can learn, but I don't have anything really to offer other than myself.
It's a pretty good balance, though, you know?
Yep.
You know what I mean? The scales are balanced pretty good there, aren't they? All right, anybody have any questions?
Nope.
No.
Can I have a motion, please?
Thank you. I move that we approve Carolyn Hines's appointment to the Council on Aging Board of Directors for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2021.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Yeah, you are a little red. That's okay.
You're fine.
Nervous.
Checking for pressure here.
Bright lights.
Thank you.
There's no pressure here.
You're fine.
And again, the paperwork, paperwork will be in the Selectman's office tomorrow, and you can just take it down to the clerk and get sworn in.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, election poll workers.
Wait, we're not, yeah, we got more.
Oh, you do.
All right, you want me to just do this all in one thing?
It should be all poll workers, yeah, just lay them all.
Okay. I move that we approve Karen Monteforte, Denise Valenti, Linda Jean Nelson Bolinger, and Jean Els to the poll workers for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2020.
Seconded by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Awesome. All right, we have, we have a hearing that should have started at 7:15, but we'll get it, we're getting underway here. A hearing at approximately 7:15, approximate, so that, this is approximate, right? Application for a transfer of an existing year-round packaged goods store, all alcoholic beverage license from Oak Grove Corporation, DBA Oak Grove Package Store, to Heather Hill Holdings Corporation, Depot Liquors, under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law for the year 2020. Come on down, who's ever going to, going to be involved. Well, let me just get everybody situated, okay? All right, I have a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Roll call, Alan.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
All right, the hearing's open. All right, what do you want to tell us?
Well, this is a transfer of a liquor store from father to son, and I have strong roots to the community. I went to Wareham High School, graduated 1988, and I'm happy to be a part of the community. So we really want to just put down roots and establish a business here.
Okay. Any questions of the board?
No.
I don't even mistake any names.
No.
I went through all the paperwork.
Can you state your names? That's a good idea. Put your names in the record.
My name is Sean McCoy.
Okay.
My name is Megan Brennan.
Okay.
I went through all the paperwork, I'm sure you did also. Everything is, everything's in place, everything's up to date.
Everything's in place.
Their dads were on a really good business for a long time, though.
Okay, no other questions?
No.
All right, move to close of the hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Roll call, Alan.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
We didn't ask for public input, did we?
Do we need public input on this?
Yeah.
This is a transfer.
Yeah, about a transfer. Just ownership, not location.
Huh?
Yeah, I think we do.
Yeah, I think we do.
I can do that. Does anybody want to say anything about the applicant or against the applicant? No, well, it doesn't matter. All right, so anyway, so the motion was made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Roll call, Alan.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Patrick, yes.
Okay, motion's closed. What's your pleasure?
I move that we approve the transfer of the existing year-round packaged goods store, all alcoholic beverage license from Oak Grove Corporation, DBA Oak Grove Package Store, to Heather Hill Holdings Corp., DBA Depot Liquors, under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year 2020.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
That was easy. Discussion of the master plan. Alan, I'm going to let you start because you had quite the list.
Well, my biggest concern really is that we had this done by Serp, we'll say, a year and a half ago. All the boards and committees are supposed to go through, you know, finance committee, everybody, make comments, and, you know, so we get the document, you know, so everybody's on the same page. Unfortunately, very little has been done on that point. So I'm not going to go through every page with all my comments. I'm going to hand this in to Kent Buckland, who basically is head manning the project. I don't know if anybody else has done it or is ready, but my concern is that the planning board is supposed to have this coming before them, I think, and... Hey, your turn. Good.
Hey, give it to Alan, he'll answer it. He's good at that.
Guys, well, lucky you're not in a courtroom, that's all I'm going to say.
A judge will be throwing you out.
You're being a brig and a seller.
To get back on point, my concern is that the planning board, of course, has to bring this forth, and they're supposed to, you know, vet it, and Richard Swenson, who's in the room, has been working pretty hard to get it done, but I'm concerned that we're not really going to have a document that's ready to go for Springtown meeting. It's an important document if it gets used, which in the last one we did, quarter ways back, was put in a file room and probably collected dust, and that was it.
I think I took it out of a room one time there where it was.
It might have been the only one. So I just want to make sure that we, everybody gets their input, and it gets done, but it gets done properly, so we don't spend all this time and it becomes useless.
Anybody else have any input?
Well, just as far as the town meeting portion goes, isn't the purpose to hear the report?
Right.
Relating to the document at town meeting? Town meeting doesn't have an up or down vote on this. Under state law, the planning board is the one that approves it. So if they're looking for, to hear the report of the, you know, of the planning board on this at town meeting, you could have an article for that, I suppose, and then that way at least it gets in the town report as well.
Yeah. The important piece is that all the, all the different departments of the town have their inputs, so we get a cohesive unit, because this is basically a guide for the town moving forward for the next five or 10 years, where they want to be. How they get there, a lot of times, may be on their own, but you're trying to get, you know, all the departments in the same basic game plan of where they want to be.
Yeah. I'd like to thank Richard Swenson for spearheading the Wareham Congress proposal to try to get this input that you're talking about. I know that a couple of, maybe a year and a half ago when this process started, maybe it's two years, you know, there were presentations over in the town hall auditorium, you know, people could write, could run around and make comments, you know, did we make this goal, did we make that goal, blah, 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 blah. So there was some input then, but Richard has worked pretty hard to sort of regenerate input and try to get it from the boards, because, of course, whatever happened over in town hall two years ago wasn't really in the context of seeking commentary directly from the boards, it was just public presentations, public offerings, and so on and so forth. So Richard, Richard worked hard at it, and you think he should be acknowledged for that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a master plan, and Richard almost has it, the planning board, Richard has been going through it with the planning board, and I think they're almost ready to vote on it, and once they endorse it, it can move forward, but that's, that's a group that has to do that.
Well, I think if anybody has anything they want to get to them, let's see if we can get it in the office, like, before their next meeting, which is on Monday, I think, right? You meet on Monday?
No. Twenty-seven.
Is it two weeks? Okay. So let's try to get it in by this week.
They're still making some changes.
So that we can get it down to, to Ken, and let's see if we can get whatever, because I had a few things I had written down myself, which I'd like to have them look at. And then, Alan, if you could write out your list, and anybody else who has one, and let's get them into our office. If you get them to our office, we'll get it all down to Ken, okay? I'll make sure they get it all to Ken, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Sure.
No, we will. We'll get it to Ken and make sure that it, you know, gets, gets at least to the planning board, and hopefully, they'll, they'll take a look at it, and we'll go forward from there. All right, next is, next I'm going to skip the cultural council update. Are they here?
Yeah.
Oh, they are? All right, come on down.
Wow.
Come on down.
That would have been a faux pas.
Yeah, that would have been a faux pas. What I was going to do is bring the Charter Review Commission ahead of them, but since they're here, let's just do this.
All right.
So the best thing is sit down, pull the mics nice and close, make sure the green lights are on, and then, why don't you give us your names first, so everybody knows out there who you are, and then you can give us your update.
Okay, my name is Kathy Gleason from the Cultural Council.
Kristy LeCue.
And Wendy Brighjali.
Ooh, you sound good, too. Ready to know.
Are we good? All right.
Yeah, that's great. All right, so why don't you give us a little update and tell us what's going on?
Well, we finished our grant cycle for 2020, and we had 39 applications, and we granted 26 grants. And I think if you've given, been given a list of the people that we did, or the groups that were granted, right?
Yes.
You have their list?
Yeah.
Right, I think I already gave it to them. She was going to put it in your folders.
Is it in the folder?
It was, it was in the packet.
Yes, it's in the folder.
In the packet. There's two pages there.
But these will be going on throughout 2020, and one of our priorities is that the event take place in town or involve the town, and have the, 26 of them will be happening. And Kristy, or Wendy, you want to read off some of them?
Yeah, you could read a couple if you want.
Do you want me to read them?
You guys should read them all off, this is awesome.
We're very, we're excited about it.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right. I'm just going to go through the applicants. The Wareham Council on Aging, the Wareham Middle School Drama Club, Wendy Brighjali, Onset Bay Association, Music from Lands and Wareham, Song Keepers, Pity Theater Company, Wareham Middle School Drama Club, Community Connections, Wareham Day Center, Jackson Gilman, Kurt Whipple, Andrew Buckley, Boys and Girls Club of Wareham, Friends of the Wareham Free Library, Jackson Gilman, Kat Jones, Old Colony History Museum, Onset Bay Association, Onset Bay Association, South Coast Sanctuaries, Stephen Lewis, Wareham Cooperative School, Wareham Land Trust, Wareham Land Trust, Wareham Minutemen and Militia Companies, Wareham Oyster Festival. And you can see right next to them are the projects that they did. For example, my project, the project I did, I was just the applicant, but we took the sixth graders to see the Christmas Carol at the Zeitarian Theater as a field trip, so.
Great.
That's very cool.
That's very cool.
Very nice.
Does anybody have any questions or want to ask anything of the young ladies?
No, just thank you. It's nice to see the cultural council being able to function and do stuff. We went for a few years and nothing ever happened, and it's nice to see you getting funding.
We should say that we're always welcoming new members if anyone in the public hears this and shows an interest.
New members.
Also, get a, you can also get ahold of, like, Matt Underhill, the IT manager, and you can give him information to put up on the website, which always helps. Whatever we can do, just let us know.
Thank you. All right.
Jim, you have anything?
It's just nice to see what actually the money goes towards, and, you know, thanks.
Yeah, we had over nine thousand dollars that we were able to grant out, nine thousand six hundred dollars, um, that we were able to grant out this year, so. The te- the state gave us ninety-one hundred, and then we had some left from last year, so.
Is this all state-funded?
Yes.
That's nice, nice when we can do that.
Yeah, even better.
Yes, exactly.
That's right, it is.
Well, thanks for all your work on this. I know you have to go vet the applications and go through them and everything else and, you know, people may look at it and say, "Well, it's only nine thousand dollars," but you had thirty-nine applicants. You had to screen them, you had to select them, so that takes work. It's not something that just happens in a vacuum, so thanks for working hard on this.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah, it's awesome. Mary?
Thank you, ladies. Excellent job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do and thanks for coming in. And giving us the update. And it's always nice when you, when you can see stuff like this, because we know how it really, you know, you take nine thousand dollars, doesn't seem like a lot of money, but when you spread it out and everybody gets a little bit, it helps every group, that's just amazing. So thank you so much.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, you take care now. All right, we have a review with the charter review committee, please.
Unfortunately.
Come on down. If you could do the same thing, make sure the lights are on and pull the microphones close.
Nobody has any problem hearing Whiteside.
Why don't you just tell each state the name?
Good evening, I'm Judith Whiteside and with me is Nan Evans, a member of the Charter Review Committee. She's my moral support, actually, for tonight.
She needs a lot of it.
Yeah. We gave you in your agenda a list of the things that we have already voted and decided to make recommendations on in our report to the, um, Springtown meeting. At the moment that I sent this to you, there were fourteen recommendations. And at our last night's meeting, we came up with another, I think, five recommendations, which include revisiting the Board of Sewer Commissioners, the school committee, the Town Administrator Section One dash one, the Board of Assessors, the entire verbiage. And I believe that was it. Really what we are doing here is what?
Wasn't the agenda packed?
We didn't, we didn't get that.
You didn't get a copy of this?
It should be.
I'm not seeing a.
It never got in, it never got into the agenda.
I was, I sent it to your secretary.
I know you did.
And, um, Mr. Bowen had a copy of it that I went over with him today.
Okay.
Mr. Bowen. Town council and I reviewed this today. The upshot of the meeting today is that it appears that we will be coming back to the town meeting with a recommendation, which is what we are charged with doing. We probably will also bring to the town meeting at least one recommendation that would be a substantive change to the document. Many of the changes that we are making to the document at the moment are, their grammatical or their presentation.
Punctuation, spelling?
No, they're actually things like, this is a far friendlier presentation than this.
Right.
Would you rather read this or would you rather read this? Just by looking at it, okay? So we've spent a lot of time in terms of, um, formatting, clarity, concise, um, presentation.
I wanna make it user-friendly, I think is the simplest way to put it.
Right. One of the things that we are going to be recommending is that these notes that are in the document and they give you history, we are recommending that they go to the back of the document. They don't to be, need to be messing up the middle of the document. We also have, are recommending that the, um, summary of articles be totally rewritten because the summary of articles is totally incorrect because as the charter has been updated, the summary has not. We're going to be recommending that the minority report be removed from the body of the report but be included as an appendix. So this document will have a table of contents. It will have a summary or preface of the document. It will have the document itself. And it will have several appendices that, that bring forth the things that we are moving around. For instance, those notes which show the legislative action that has changed the document over a period of time, since the period when it was adopted in nineteen seventy-seven. So, in our deliberations, um, we have looked at the chart of organization for the town. We've also looked at previous recommendations and we've talked among ourselves. And we firmly believe, and in fact unanimously have voted, to recommend that the town clerk become an appointed position. The current town clerk is in one-hundred percent support of that. One of the members of our commission is the previous town clerk and she is also, by her vote, unanimous vote, supportive of that. We believe that's an important and substantive change to the document because we believe that somebody needs to be in charge. And that person, who is the town administrator, needs to be able to function as the C, um, CEO and have the duties and responsibilities that are in fact spelled out under Section Four, One of the charter. So, we will in fact be bringing that to you for inclusion on the April, um, town meeting. There are a couple of other changes that, they're substantive, but they're not, they're not as substantive as that. One of them is that the road commissioners are in the charter and they really shouldn't be. They should be in the bylaws. And so that will be an article where we ask that it come out of the charter as a portion of the charter and be added to the bylaws. We believe that will come before the October town meeting.
Just a quick question on that. Under state law, I know the selectmen, unless there is a, a road commission function as the road commissioner is just as, other duties fall to us if there isn't another board doing them. Does there still need to be a reference in the charter to the road commission? And then their regulations, for example, go into the bylaws or?
No, they, the, the reason it ended up in the, in the charter was because the selectmen were in fact the road commissioners and may not have been doing everything that needed to be done. And so it was then moved to be a separate entity.
Right.
And that's why it ended up in the charter. Under, the, the charter is the, the, the bones of the structure of the government. A committee, um, or board belongs in the, the, you know, the guts and glory of it. So they, it doesn't belong there and, and we know that.
Just further with regard to that, um, have you also conducted a simultaneous review of the bylaws to, to look for things in there that you might otherwise think should be in the charter? Because I think there's kind of a, over the years, there's been a bit of cross-pollination between the two. And it, it's understandable because they both operate as functioning, yeah, okay.
You know she has, you can tell by the smile.
A rhetorical question, basically.
Now, I'm really glad, I'm really glad that you asked that question because under the terms of the charter, the Charter Review Commission Committee is supposed to have been appointed in the year ending two thousand nine. We had our first meeting on November fourth, which by my math is eleven months into the year as opposed to, you know, like January or February. There may be reasons for that and there may not, and I'm not here to debate them. Since that time, we met on, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven. Seven Mondays in a row, other than the, the holidays. And we have managed to come and review all but three sections of the charter. The making of indices or appendixes has not been tackled yet because you can't do that until you get to the end of the, end of the line, if you will. We've scheduled meetings all the way through, every Monday, through the actual town meeting date because we feel it's very important that we have read every word seven or eight times, that we do do this crossing back and forth. However, this document alone that we have in front of us, let me, let me give you a little bit of background. Our first meeting, I had a document dated two thousand sixteen. I got it from the clerk's office as the current charter.
Not so much?
Not so much, but that's what the clerk's office gave me. Then, the, our first meeting, somebody else showed me this one saying revised, April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. So already, we have communication issues. We have opportunity issues. We have, this is, this is current, this is what's on the website. How'd you find this one? Well, I looked under blah, blah, blah. It doesn't matter how it came to be, it came to be. That is one of the things that we think is necessary to address. The other thing that we think is necessary to address, and I'm getting to your question, is that from time to time, we have had to take a section of the charter and look at the bylaws. The bylaws, in our opinion, need to have a committee review them soup to nuts exactly the same way that we have done this. We believe that this document, which has inaccuracies in terms of how we do things, misleading information because the law has changed.
It's just, it's.
It's a mess. It's a, it's.
There's a lot to do with it.
Lot, yeah. It's a mess. So, we believe that, um, that a review of the, of the bylaws really should be undertaken and that, that there should be a committee to undertake that. And if this has taken us as long as it's taken us, and this is only twenty-four pages or something like that.
You've got what, a hundred and nine pages of bylaws or something like that?
Right, but, but, but there's, there's a, there's a way of making, yeah, here's the bylaws. There's a way of making these documents be user-friendly and available to the public. Current, consistent, and up-to-date. And that's part of what we are hoping we can do for you, not address the bylaws. The, another omission, if you will, is that the sewer commissioners, even though they are elected and that was passed through legislation, they don't appear in the charter as elected officials. There are many little nits and bits that simply aren't current. So when we make our recommendation, we will be pointing those inconsistencies, inconsistencies out to you and recommending, uh, that they be undertaken ASAP. We know that our appointment ends May of two thousand twenty. We know that our charge is to bring to the town meeting our recommendations. There's some feeling on our board that we would kind of like to be appointed for a longer period of time so that we can in fact shepherd those recommendations through the fall town meeting, which is where these would be undertaken. I'm not here to ask that tonight, but we have discussed that at our committee level on more than one occasion.
Just, just to your point, um, we're sort of, we're sort of in the middle as to when the warrant closes. We know roughly when we're gonna open it because we went through the whole.
I have February third. I have February third on a piece of paper I was handed.
Well, the interesting thing is, is that could actually be extended if the charter change that is before the legislature, that has made it through the senate, but it's, it's waiting for third reading in the house and then engrossment by the house and then it goes to the governor for signature. If that happens soon enough, then I think the new provision says that the warrant needs to be done by the first, and posted by the first mon- uh, is it the first or second Monday in March? I think it might be the second Monday in March. So there may be some more time for you. I don't know if that's helpful to get another four weeks out of it or if it would, you know.
I don't, with all due respect, Mr. Titlebaum, I don't think it's helpful because I think what we really need to concentrate on as a board right now is getting that substantive change, which we recommend and endorse, which is the town clerk going from elected to appointed. Put that before the meeting and then have these other, some of them are housekeeping, some of them are presentation, some of them are gonna be changing a word. I believe that we will be recommending that the entire document be, um, transferred to gender-neutral terminology. In other words, that there will not be the word he or she that the town administrator will be referred to as the town administrator. And that do, that the verbiage would always either follow the title but not say he or she.
Does it say he or she in there now?
It says he.
Does it really?
Yes, it does. One of the things that we've discussed.
That would happen in this day and age.
Yeah.
Well, but it happened in nineteen seventy-seven, that's the thing.
Well, but you also have, you recently, I believe, um, voted to keep your title a selectman and, um, there's some feeling that we would recommend, uh, select board, which may or may not fly, but, but that would be gender-neutral. So those are the kinds of things that we are coming up with. The school revision brings what the school committee does up to and includes, the revision's under the Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, which the current document, this one, the latest one, doesn't have. The assessors section, which was rewritten by our assessing, what is her title, chief? The head, Jackie.
Jackie.
Director of Assessment, um, actually refers to the law and what they do. And the current document online doesn't, doesn't cut it. It doesn't describe what they do. It in fact refers to things that are no longer done. So there, there are many things that, that, that somebody like me and like Ms. Evans pull our hair out over. We both are picky readers and really picky editors.
Fussy.
Fussy.
Gee, well, we would've never known that of you, Julie.
No, no, you wouldn't have. It's interesting that, um, that they're editorial changes and I think that we've enjoyed the rapport that we have managed to establish among ourselves.
I think we, we wanna make it something that's alive. I'm sorry, we wanna make it alive. Oh, I can hear the difference. We, we wanna make it alive and something that means something and that people can look at it and read it and get something out of it and not have it just be this boring, um, document that doesn't necessarily mean a lot if you, if you don't know what it's talking about. I'd like to draw people in so that they will want to read it and understand it.
So.
Go ahead.
Your presentation here.
Mm-hmm.
You're basically saying you don't think you'll be, have it completed by town meeting to make a recommendation on the hall.
What, no.
And you'd be looking, well, and you'd be looking for approval to continue the committee? To complete the charter review? I mean, that's what I kinda, I thought you said.
Okay, not quite. Our report will be, in fact, totally complete. But we will not have time to make any recommendations to this board for articles to go before the town meeting other than the town clerk becoming appointed as opposed to elected. We would like to be able to go to the October town meeting as a committee, not as.
Can I, um, throw you to, um, the attorney? I know we had the discussion at the beginning. Can we allow them to do that?
Attorney?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm just, just so we can.
Terms discretionary with us.
I think it's discretionary.
It doesn't, the charter, uh, portion that.
I just know previously they said May, town meeting, whatever, so I just wanna get it clarified and let's move it forward if we can and.
What does it say on the charter?
It says. And Mr. Bowen and I had this discussion earlier because, again, um, thank you for allowing our committee to speak with Mr. Bowen, first of all, because some of what we thought we wanted to do, I just wanted to make sure we could move all of the notes to the end and create appendices and do, you know, what I would call housecleaning stuff. The Board of Selectmen shall, in every year which ends in nine, appoint a committee to review the charter, review the charter. Said committee shall submit a report with recommendations to the first annual town meeting that ends in zero concerning any proposed amendments or revisions to the charter which it believes to be necessary or desirable. This article becomes effective in ninety-nine, so it's been in effect for only ten years. Our feeling is that this document is a moving document.
Which it is.
That it may be amended once, three times, seven times in any calendar year or any, you know, town calendar year. And in fact, that there should be a mechanism for making sure that those amendments get into the document. Clearly, they haven't gotten into the document and we're not being critical of anybody or any way of doing business, but we believe that there should be a, I, I'll call it, an ongoing committee charged with making sure that this little sucker stays current. Because what good is it to John Q. Public if it is not current and not user-friendly and not concise and not correct?
Okay, I wanna, I want Rich to finish away and end. He was asked a question, he should finish it.
I should start it? So, um, under the charter review section, uh, charter review, periodic charter review section, the committee is to be appointed at a particular time for a specific purpose. And the way the section is written is, you appointed in the year ending in nine, it makes its report at the first annual town meeting ending in zero. And as a charter autho- authorized charter review committee, that's its mission, that's its jurisdiction. However, if you want the committee to continue to function, the way to do that would be not to continue it on as a charter review commission as contemplated by the statute, but to recreate and reauthorize the committee as a charter review committee as a, as a, uh, committee created by the Board of Selectmen. You have the power to create committees. So, it, it wouldn't be the committee that was created by the charter. It would be a committee that you created. And I think in that fashion, the work could continue without, use the word, offending, offending the charter. So that's how to do it, if that's what you wanna do.
All right, good. Okay, go ahead, uh.
In two thousand nine, the way they did it in that particular time, they gave the charter review committee a year and a half. It wasn't just, you know, a short period. They were actually specified a year and a half. Rich, isn't also on, on the master general law that we can call a charter review committee at any time?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the, the provision of the charter, it's a fail-safe. It's the, the lower, the low bar.
It, it, it's, may I?
Go ahead.
In, um, Section seven-one-A, in general, this charter may be replaced, revised, or amended in accordance with the procedures made available by Article eighty-nine of the Amendments to the State Constitution and any legislation enacted to implement said amendment. So right there, you are given the general authority to do it whenever. In B, that was A, in B, you have limited yourself and the committee to specific timeframes, which.
Rich is right, we can create a committee if, of any time.
Or you could in fact get rid of Section B and you would have a. ...Section B, and you would have, which would take care of you providing for a committee from time to time, whenever you wanted to do it. I think it's very important, not just for the charter, certainly for the bylaws, and certainly for many of the other documents that we have come across in our review, that somebody is in charge of them and making sure that they are up to date and that they are in fact available to the public in the correct form.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one other thing. I, I do, I don't know everything, but I do know that there's been discussion about possibly trying to use community preservation funding to actually codify the bylaws.
That has been withdrawn from the CPC application until Mrs., until the two individuals who were sponsoring it have time to review that.
Yeah.
I worked with the town clerk on that, not to cut you short, but there were three different firms. In order to codify, you have to have something other than pieces of paper that may or may not be...
Yeah, exactly.
Accurate, so they...
When you've got, when you, when you have to spend a couple of weeks figuring out which, which version of the charter is live, then...
Yeah, who's on first, who's on first is really what it comes down to. I believe that, that this document, the charter, because it's so much shorter than the bylaws, is a massive undertaking, and it needs to be held in somebody's hand as it's a moving document. It is a living document, it is the basis of our government. Ms. Evans was talking about how Southeastern Mass Uni, what, what's the name of it?
Oh, UMass Dartmouth.
School of Law is from time to time looking to place interns who would be charged, you could employ them on a, you know, intern basis to help you keep that, those documents current. There are all sorts of ways of doing it, but, you know what my opinion is.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you so much for keeping us up to date. We appreciate it.
Yes. And thank you, you know, for sort of operating within the confines of the charge here, that we're not hearing some interesting proposals about switching to this form of government or that form of government that would be more properly done through a charter commission rather than a charter review committee.
The only substantive change, as I say, is one that actually has been presented to, I believe, two town meetings...
Yeah.
And failed at that, at those town meetings, but the previous incumbent and the current incumbent of that position both believe and support making it an appointed position.
Go ahead, Mary.
Can I get a, can I make a copy of the list that you have, just?
Send it.
Do you just want to email? Can I make a copy?
Whatever you want to do. You can email it and...
Well. Thank you.
I apologize, because it was, it was given to you.
Not a problem.
Yeah, it went to Patrick, myself, and I think the office and the clerk. I have a copy on my phone, my iPad.
I'll send it to you guys.
Right. I sent it to use the chair to be included. I sent it to Alan because I knew he was our liaison from this board.
I'll get it forwarded to you. I gave, I sent it to the office, but apparently it didn't get in the...
It didn't.
I think they made me a liaison too.
No.
I'm sorry.
I think they made me a liaison too.
Yeah, both of you.
Oh, I know that Alan is. I was, that was all I was told.
Okay.
So I go, you know...
Yeah.
I'll, I'll pull it out here and I'll send it to you tonight when I, when I get a chance to...
Okay, that's fine.
I'll send it to you.
I can give you an updated version through what we did last night, because what I presented orally is not all in...
Right, right.
Okay.
I just want to say thanks for all the hard work you guys are doing, you people are doing.
Thank you.
How gender neutral.
No, it's, it's fine. We, yeah, you guys is fine.
We're going to replace every, every gender-specific reference with yous guys.
Yous guys.
Well, thank you for your time, and as always, we have, we actually have enjoyed this revolting task.
It's interesting.
No, it's really interesting, and it, it's mind-blowing.
It's right up your alley, though, it really is.
Well, it's not just up my alley.
You love this.
Yeah.
There's a few of us.
There are a few of us who just are...
Fit right in, right.
Just get into this.
We picked a good group.
We picked a good group.
So, yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, acceptance of donations from the Wareham Free Library in amounts of $7,000, $2,050.
I move that we approve them.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next up would be any other business not reasonably anticipated last 48 hours. We don't have any. The town administrator's report, for obvious reasons, that's not going to happen. The liaison reports, Alan.
Alan.
I've got a few here today, unfortunately. First off, Plymouth County, on the executive board, they asked me to reach out to the Mass Municipal Association. In their overall statement, everybody probably got a copy in their box today with policies, et cetera, for the MMA and the Mass Selectmen's Association. For some reason, sometime back when the county government was, the commissioners were basically what we call patronage jobs, which were basically appointed by elected officials and things, the county government wasn't working really well, and the MMA had a policy against county government altogether. I've been asked to work between the two organizations, see if we can remove the language that's in place from the MMA on this, since this is no longer an issue, since county commissioners are elected, and there's only, I believe, six county governments left in the state of Massachusetts, and those six are all working very well and doing a lot of good things. So it's kind of a source spot for the counties versus the MMA. It's always fun being in the middle. Ken and GAF made a presentation at the JTPG, which is a transportation group at Surpat on the bike path. They did a full show about the actual path itself, how it works, everything else, which received well there. If for some reason somebody drops out, Bike Path could move up a couple of years if, if some money becomes available and there's an opening. The other piece that was not included in the actual presentation, for some reason, they didn't do the roundabout at the end of Narrows Road and Depot Street that's also part of this plan, so that will be a separate project down the line.
You mean, do you mean Minut in Depot? Okay, all right.
All the way at the end with that mess we have.
Yeah, that's a mess.
Yeah, that thing's...
The only issue we have is because of, yeah, because of the railroad tracks being so close, there's some touchy issues there because of that.
And when you come across, like, from Great Neck Road and you come out straight there, you, you can't look, you can't see the traffic going the other way coming down on Sedat.
Yeah, we have issues, so we'll see what happens.
When they, when they first put the stop sign up on the island there, you know, if you come down Minut and then, and then bang a left heading towards Cranbury Highway and they put up that stop sign, I must have been blowing the thing for six months, because I got pulled over by a cop one night, he's like, he's like, "Didn't you see the stop sign?" I'm like, "What stop sign?" He's like, "It's been there for six months," and I'm like, "Pfft." He let me go, but it was, that's how confusing that intersection is.
Everybody has this electronically now, by the way.
Oh.
I just sent it to everybody.
But thank you.
Yeah, because I already had it before. Okay, so that piece there, Buzzes Bay Coalition, there was a meeting yesterday on the Outfall project, proposed project, because it's still, there is no memo of understanding between the three towns, Mass Maritime Academy, which is the state property.
They're coming in next week.
Yeah, but we gave Corin a whole bunch of lists of things that we think that are for those issues. One of the major issues, of course, is where are you going to run the pipe going, you know, going back down and stuff, simply because Route 6 and 28, the project will be finished and done, and I don't believe they're going to be allowed to dig that road up for five years or more. So, and the railroad has rejected, you know, running something along the railroad tracks.
Well, nobody else has really signed on to the project either.
Well, there is no memo of understanding between any of the towns yet, so...
It's problematic in itself.
I know, so...
They keep pushing hard.
We'll see what happens, but I'm just saying, it's just...
See, next week, we should have, we're going to have a, they'll be in here, so...
I really think going forward, they need to create a sewer district among the municipalities that are called through the legislature.
Well, that's what they're doing.
Talking about member of...
That's what it is.
Yeah, I think it needs to be Special Legislative Act creating a district. I don't think an MOU is strong enough.
No, the MOU is just a beginning thing. They actually have, what we were working on yesterday was an actual setup. They're using the Mansfield, I think it's Norton Eastern Regional Wastewater Plant that they have. They have three towns, they have, it's, it's a regional setup, and it's, it's exactly what you're talking about. And that's what they're looking to do, but it's quite convoluted in how to make it all work, because you have to have three towns and two customers, which would be part of Plymouth, and then, because it'd be Marion, Wareham, and Bourne, then you have the Maritime Academy, and like I say, Plymouth has customers, and it's going to be interesting to see how it works, since we have the plant. So that's working there, but we'll see what they say, but it'll be interesting what they tell you.
Yeah, it'll be interesting.
Route 6, the possible redesign, there was a meeting in Marion last week when I got, when I got back home. They did a, well, a three-hour presentation, took a lot of questions and answers. We'll see what happens, but we're probably looking at, if they actually do anything, it could be three to five years out before it's done, just so you know. The Swiss Beach Traffic Light, we're moving along with that, even though we have it locked into the Route 6 redo. It's on a separate, a separate piece out in itself, actually, so we're looking at that separately. We may get that done ahead of time. Route 28 to Hornet Road, I was asked by the Fire Department and the Police Department to see if I could get a traffic study done there, because that road coming out by the Mill Pond Diner and the bicycle shop is a problem. We had accidents and they were concerned, so the traffic study is done, the next step is waiting to get that studied, the Mass DOT, to see if they'll consider doing some kind of a light or something there. So we're working on that. Commuter rail, Phase 1 is on track, they keep working on that. Funding's in place for the whole project, so I'm keeping after, Susan Gifford as well, about the spur from basically the new Middleborough Station that they're going to build down to Wareham and Buzzes Bay. We will not be like the main road, we will be a spur coming off of Middleborough, coming back and forth, which, the one nice thing, if it works the way it's, in theory, you're going to have trains from Bedford, trains from Fall River, 3:00 and 3:00 in the morning, which means Wareham had the possibility of looking at the six different trains in the morning, depending on how they do it, because you have three coming up from both directions. The train, the station is set up with a station in the middle and the tracks on both sides, and that's how that would work. And the reason being, again, is you have two separate trains coming up. So you have one train that can go back and forth from Ware, from basically Middleborough down to Buzzes Bay constantly.
And they do it over across.
Yeah, exactly.
So, that's moving along. Like I say, the funding's there, it's just a matter of the Mass DOT decided to pull the, you know, pull the switch on our piece, because that's all done. There's nothing they have to do at this point. Veterans Council's meeting tomorrow, they're going to have discussions about bringing back the Veterans Day Parade. I'll have more information on that a little bit. Route 6 and 28, the project's kind of on a little bit of a hole as far as what you see on the roads, but they're constantly working on the culverts, drainage, and also on the electric poles. You'll probably see a lot of poles have been replaced already and moved, but the old one's still in place. And I think there's a whole bunch of stuff sitting at the old 99 Restaurant side there, so, yeah. Yeah, so they'll be digging up the road sooner than later. Funding for the electronic voting for Springtown Meeting is basically being funded through CEC again, so that's in place, doesn't come out of the town budget at all. The casino bill, we have a little bit of a problem there. They've merged the online betting and a few other things into this bill, and it's basically making it more complex, and I think it's going to slow down the process of getting this thing, you know, through the legislature to even get a vote from the House and Senate. Going to have to watch, because they, they took what was strictly trying to change the Class 1 license and modifying it, which is the only one available, and they've added other things to it, which is one way to kill it.
What they do when they're trying to slow things down.
Well, or when they're trying to kill it. So that's what's going on there.
She, what else? It's governed.
It's governed. I've got a meeting this Friday, because the other one got canceled, for the Plymouth 400, to talk about what Wareham's going to be involved with for the America's 400th Birthday, starting in a couple of months, really. I'm not sure how it's going to work out for us. I'd like to put on the agenda to have an official vote either way. I want to change the name from the Board of Selectmen to the Wareham Select Board. The only reason I'm asking for it is that the Mass Selectmen's Association, you probably got paperwork today, they've, they've officially changed the Selectmen's Association to the Mass Select Board Association. The MMA's meeting on the 24th during the voting and stuff, this will be basically voted on and accepted as well.
Yeah, we already did.
Well, we didn't, we didn't vote officially, it wasn't on the agenda, but I just mentioned it, we said we didn't want to do it. I think we need to at least be on record one way or the other. I don't have a problem which way you want to go, but we need to be on record.
I'll put it on.
Thank you.
No problem.
What else we got?
I'm glad that so concerned with such weighty matters in our lobbying organization.
Yeah. What can I tell you? What are towns have changed to that?
This, I represent Plymouth County Cape and the Islands, and you're looking at, you're looking at about over half of the select boards have made the change already, so I could, whatever you guys want to do, it's fine with me.
Get it in a plastic bag and...
Oh, yeah, also on the plastic bag, bill number...
You had to open your big mouth, didn't you?
Since you brought that up...
It's so stupid, it's just...
Plastic bag, the bill number is S2410, and the O is Revised Bill in the Senate, and it looks to me, from what I'm getting from information, is that has a really good chance of getting through, which was the drawback, because the House had already passed one. So we may be looking at a bag bill possibly by, before April, just so everybody knows.
The PC police are going to come to your house and arrest you.
Uh, no, they use that toilet flush thing, actually.
Yeah, I know, it's getting so crazy and so...
They'll, they'll use hemp ties instead of plastic to cure your hands.
You can't use hemp unless, unless the hemp's grown in Massachusetts, though. And the last thing I have is, unfortunately, there's still over 300-plus projects for marijuana licensing, whether they're growing, manufacturing, retail. We will be seeing, when talking to Cannabis Control Commission at the MMA meeting, probably it, myself and probably 300 other people, asking them, you know, what's going on, because the delay is getting to be a problem now.
It's like everything just stopped.
It did stop.
Yeah, they...
They just, I think they just licensed two other places in the last, in the last month and a half, I think there's been two more licenses.
Recreational... It's almost absurd.
One girl, actually, three, there's a grow, there's a manufacturer, and a retail license, and it may have been four, there may have been a medical also.
Actually, I read a media story where the state had anticipated in the first year of legalized retail, they would get 63 million and they got 22.
Well, because they didn't...
Well, they don't have the outlets, so...
And the other piece, I'm going to try and lobby, I don't think I can do anything, is the host agreement with our 3% plus the second, you know, 3% that we have, the impact fee. There's a real, real strong push from the industry, and even, even the Cannabis Control Commission, that if you can't justify, you could lose it, you know, within the first three years or five years anyway, so we're going to try and lobby for that. That's it.
Jim?
I'm just going to...
Okay.
Tina?
There's actually, from the Redevelopment Authority, tomorrow, there will be the issuance of the initial request for proposals for the Littleson Drive property, so hopefully, and I think that's kept open until the first week of March or something like that, and hopefully, we will get some replies and some ideas and so on and so forth from developers. Once that happens, you know, we'll be happy to talk more about it, but, you know, we are moving along. Town meeting, you know, gave that property to us less than a year ago, and we've already sort of formed a partnership with Mass Housing. They've, they've given us a consultant, they've come down, they've assisted with the RFP creation process, and they've been a big help.
Okay. All right. So, the other thing I want, I want everybody to understand, we have a new clerk in the office, part-time clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the way it works, technically, the charter allows us to have some input into who the clerk is. The issue was kind of very simple, because there were five applicants, five original applicants for the position, only one showed up. So we only had one. They did test her, and she tested terrific, so they hired her, okay? It wasn't anybody else to get, so we've got what we got, and they are pretty happy with her, with the pick anyway. She did a nice job on the exams, and they were pretty happy about it, and so we, we have a new clerk. And hopefully, that will help speed up some of the stuff that's been sort of lagging behind, including the, the minutes and things that have been behind.
Yeah, she works, she works at the YMCA. I've, I've met her, I think she's really good.
Yeah, she's, she passed terrifically, I mean, she really turned out to be good, but it's a shame that all we could get was five applicants. You know, it's a part-time job, and you can only get five applicants, and today, everybody's working, so it's hard to get anybody, you know what I mean? So we had five, we had one who showed up, period.
That's a benefited position too, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's, it's kind of funny, you know, the person in the street, you know, will tell you the government employees are, you know, overpaid and blah, 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 and all this, that, and the other thing. Well, this kind of puts the light of that, I think, when you can, when you can barely get anybody to apply for a job in government, so...
Yeah, it's difficult, you know, but hey, it is, but the good news is that she looks very good, and I think she's going to be great, so.
Excellent.
Okay, next up, what do we got here? Oh, wait a minute. I think we have a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait.
Oh, we got to pay the lawyer.
Oh, we got to pay the lawyer. I see. Look at he's looking, we got to pay the lawyer. All right, all right, let's pay the lawyer.
All right, I move that we approve the payment to Town Attorney Richard Bowen for fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining. It's unanimous.
Can we put on the agenda of the next month also the review and recommendation for the next year for our lawyer?
Yep, he, it's...
Has to be done in March.
It's, it has to be done by March, yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's already on the list. We got a list started of stuff. We're kind of sneaking in here and there, but thank you. The other thing, too, is just don't be afraid to ask, guys, if you want some stuff on the agenda. I mean, we don't, you know, nobody's going to bite anybody because you're asking to put stuff on the agenda. That's what we do.
That may not be true.
Just so you know. That's what we do.
It depends, Alan.
You know what I mean? That's the only thing we do, so. All right. Next up is an approval of minutes from December third and December tenth.
I move that we approve both minutes, and we were all present.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by...
I would just like to, if we, if I could be so bold.
Yep.
Is move on the minutes of December third. I want to review the tape for December tenth.
Okay.
Because I'm just not sure on, on one part. It might be good, but I just, from my own memory.
I'll withdraw my second for both.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
All right, go ahead.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from December third.
Okay, motion made for December third by Mary, seconded by Peter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It's unanimous, and as soon as you can do that, Jim, we'll, we'll get that done.
Be on it this week.
Okay, just, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, move adjourned by Peter, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It's unanimous.
Good night, Wareham.
Have a great week.